So I'm going to give you the reality and the facts, and then everybody else is going to give you all the work that's been done. And I want to make sure everyone understands there's been a ton of work done up until this point to help prepare both this and the surrounding communities for the response to COVID-19. So what I'm going to do is give you a little bit of the background on COVID-19, the disease, the virus, what it is, what it does, what it looks like, and some of the issues we're facing right now, mostly nationally but also locally. So COVID-19 is a disease that was first identified in a city called Wuhan in China, and Wuhan's known as sort of the Chicago of China, if you could put it that way. They have an extremely large population in a small density area. And what happened was there were a cluster of what we call viral pneumonias, so patients with pneumonia that didn't respond to traditional antibiotic therapy and didn't have bacterial causes. And so there was a small cluster of them, and throughout the testing, the doctors there identified that this seems to be a new strain of a virus called the coronavirus. Now coronavirus, there are four human coronaviruses, which are what cause the common cold, and then there's SARS, which you've heard of in the past, and then MERS, which are two of the more scary pandemic-type coronaviruses. This is the newest version of the coronavirus. It comes from bats. It's actually a mutation of the SARS virus, and so the official name of the virus itself is SARS-CoV-2 or SARS coronavirus 2. And the disease itself is called coronavirus disease 2019 or COVID-19. As of this point, it's in over about 100 countries. It's categorized as a pandemic by the World Health Organization due to the fact that there is sustained person-to-person transmission, and that's one of the major criteria to escalate something from an epidemic over to a pandemic. I want to give some facts on the actual severity of the disease. So a lot of this data comes from published information out of the first wave of ill people in China. So everything should be tempered with the fact that it's a different health system, it's a different patient population in the terms of higher density, higher rates of smoking, and sort of worse pollution. But there are areas of our country that are like that. Eighty or so percent of these cases are what are considered mild, and I think it's important to understand that mild means you have the flu. So if you've ever had the flu, the flu sucks.
It doesn't feel so bad.
Yeah, the flu, for some people, is extremely severe, and 80% of them give you traditional flu-like symptoms, all right?
So that's an official medical...
Oh, yeah. It's horrible.
The flu sucks.
The flu sucks, yeah. I tell my patients that all the time. You're going to feel like you're a hip-hops train for a few days, then you'll get better. Thirteen or so percent require hospitalization, and so that means they either have a pneumonia that's making it difficult for them to breathe, difficult for their oxygen levels to be maintained without additional oxygen therapy, et cetera. And then 4% to 5% require intensive care in terms of that their breathing is so bad that they need to be placed on artificial ventilation through a ventilator or something along those lines. The good news is most people recover. So there are a lot of people that are sick, and the disease itself takes two, three, four weeks to recover, but a majority of people recover with a small percentage being deadly. So the mortality range, I'll show you in a second, but it's quoted as being anywhere from 1% all the way up to 5%, 7%. The important thing is that's an average across all age groups. The highest-risk populations are those in the over 60 range, as you see on the graph on your left, and especially the 80-plus population, and those with other, what we call comorbidities, so those with heart disease, diabetes, bad lung disease, et cetera. So those are two independent factors that increase your risk of actual death and severe illness. When we talk about a new virus or any sort of contagious disease, we plotted on a spectrum. So there's two important things to understand. One is, for each infected person, how many more people will you infect if gone unchecked? And so COVID-19 ranges in the 2 to 4 range, and that's the x-axis you see on the graph to your left, and then the mortality up on the y-axis. And so you can compare it to things like seasonal flu, which you see there, has about a 0.1% mortality on average, and what's called an R naught of about 1, which is why it tempers off every year, because the R naught less than 1 means the disease will disappear. You see measles all the way on your right, not very deadly, but it does have an extreme virulence in that it's very easy to transmit compared to bird flu and MERS, which are extremely deadly but aren't easy to transmit. And this is why all of these previous sort of near pandemics would come and go, whereas COVID-19 is causing all this commotion, is because it has a good virulence and a minor mortality rate, which is allowing it to spread throughout the world. Fatality, or what we call the case fatality rate, also changes by country, and I'm going to talk about that in a second. And it's usually due to the quality of the healthcare system, the quality of the preparedness, and the tempering and mitigation efforts that are done by those countries. So if you see on the right there, you have the number of confirmed cases going from top to bottom, and then the mortality on the right. So you look at China, that had a 3.9% mortality and most amount of cases, and then you go down to somewhere like South Korea that has a decent number of cases but a very low mortality So I wanted to put this into real perspectives for you guys. So I went on Google last night and looked up your population. So 47,282, does that sound about right?
Yes.
Okay. And what the census told me was there's just under 5,000 people that are 65 or older. Does that sound about right? Okay. So let's assume 50% of people are infected, okay, at some point over the course of this disease transmission. That's about 23,000 people infected or 2,400 people over 65.
So would you talk about that assumption of the 50% people infected?
Yeah. So it all goes to the sort of modeling of the epidemiologists, and it's not that 50% will come down with it tomorrow. It's that over the course of the pandemic's spread, 50% of people will become infected. So that number ranges from anywhere from 30% to 70%, and those are best estimations based on what we know about the R naught or the transmissibility of the virus itself. And so at the end of it all, we'll say, how many of the, what percentage of the population was infected? And if we essentially do very little, it would infect 50% to 60% of the population. So if we have 2,400 people over 65 that are infected, and we assume that 5% critical care, that in terms of needing ICU beds, that's about 122 people over 65 that require ICUs, okay? In the city of Burleson, you have a couple hospitals here, and they do not have 122 critical care beds, all right? And so the point of all this, and again, these are raw numbers in terms of if you sat around and did absolutely nothing, this is what the situation would look like. We talk about this concept of flattening the curve, all right? So every disease follows a curve in terms of number of new infections, number of actively infected, and then eventually it peaks and falls back down. But there is a threshold that our healthcare system has in terms of not just prehospital but hospital ability to take care of people. And the goal of all of the measures that we're talking about, when we talk about social isolation, social distancing, all these preventative measures, the goal is what's called flattening the curve. And the point of flattening the curve is even if you allow for the understanding that 60% of your people will get infected, if that occurs over a year as opposed to over a month, the healthcare system can take care of that, just in a longer period of time, all right? And so we talk about what are the measures that we can do. So we sort of joke around about social distancing, but the reality of it is that we should not congregate in large places, we should not congregate in six feet of each other, we should implement all the hand washing and cleaning and all the other sort of preventative techniques that we're talking about. And from a government perspective, there are some things you can do, as I've heard you're already sort of starting to do, and then from a preparedness and response perspective, we should continue the work we are. But it's important for people to know, there are a lot of people out there that think this is the flu, or that this is just like the flu. And people go to work with the flu, or they try to go to work with the flu. And it's important to understand that people who are sick should stay home. People who are at high risk should not go into large gatherings where they are likely to catch this or any other communicable disease. And people have to practice good hand hygiene, good common sense techniques. Otherwise, the transmission will continue at a rate that we honestly don't really see that often. This is a graph of Italy. Okay, so on the left here is from the first number of cases back in early February, down in the blue. This is their number of cases diagnosed going down to, it was updated a few days ago, up until March 11th. And plotted next to it is from our sort of first cases or so as well, and you notice that we follow a similar pattern here. The reason Italy gets brought up a lot is because Italy essentially ignored this until it was too late, all right? So they implemented a small quarantine in the north of Italy, and there was a hashtag going around about how Milan won't be stopped, and one of their mayors was walking around, high-fiving people in the streets, and he's now in the hospital with coronavirus. So the reason, again, for putting this up here is people think that the NBA and Disneyland and everything else are doing this due to media hype or pressure or something else, but the reality of it is it's not. This is an effort to flatten the curve of this disease, and we all need to understand that it's real, and it's not the flu, and if you blow it off, you will turn into another Italy. And so that is my doom and gloom job, is to make sure everyone understands that. And the important thing to note with that is, all the things that we've been talking about, all the things that we've been preparing for, are the ways to flatten the curve, okay? So what are we doing from a medical perspective on the EMS side? So we're doing call screening through the 911 process. So if you call 911, you're getting screened for your risk in terms of international travel or known contacts. We have addresses in all of our communities flagged in our dispatch system. So if someone is being monitored by the health departments, we have a knowledge of where they are, and if they call 911, we go in with full protective gear. We do in-person screening for those with signs and symptoms of respiratory infections. We go in with full personal protective equipment as needed. And right now in Burleson, you don't have any positive cases, and that's great. But unfortunately, it probably will not last. And by the time you have one positive severe case, which is usually what's required to actually get the test done, is for it to be a severe case, by the time you have one severe case, you do likely have a number of other patients in the community that are either mildly symptomatic and are going around spreading it, or are yet to be sort of identified. When we talk about our preparation and planning, there's things that we have ready in our back pocket for when or if the time comes. So things like low-priority patients being non-transported by EMS. So we, every time we have a situation like this, we have a number of people who call 911 who are actually relatively mildly sick and don't need to go to an emergency department that really needs to be saved for the high-acuity patients. So we have processes where we can identify those low-risk patients and navigate them to alternate destinations, or instruct them to stay home and how to do self-monitoring. One of the things that you probably heard during the declarations yesterday, as well as in some other states that are dealing with this, like Colorado and Seattle and South Korea, talking about drive-through testing centers and other ways to get patients tested. And then, you know, the threat here with all of this is the personal protective equipment is, it's right now fine in terms of volume, but as we start seeing more and more patients, we have to find ways to get access to enough personal protective equipment to make sure our healthcare workers stay safe in order to take care of these patients. And then the last thing I want you to be aware of, that just so you have the knowledge of it, there was a group that got together a number of years ago called the North Texas Regional Mass Critical Care Task Force. And this is a group of physicians, healthcare leaders, and other individuals that came together and said, if we ever reach a point in our community where a pandemic is so bad that we're having to make decisions about who gets care and who doesn't, there's an entire plan in place that's been approved by the state that's there in case we ever need it. So the name of the game is mitigation, okay? Even if you don't have cases here in the community, the goal is mitigation. You know, the whole toilet paper and water thing, I agree, it's panicked and it's ridiculous, okay? This is not a hurricane, it's not a tornado, you don't need to go out, you're not going to lose access to the grocery store, all right? But it's important for people to be prepared, and it does take a little bit of resources to stay home. If you're going to stay home for two weeks, it requires a lot. Now granted, 2020 is the perfect year to have a pandemic. I mean, I can pull out my computer that's in my pocket and order an entire grocery shop to my front door, and they can leave it there and go back, and that's great. And that's an important thing that we all need to understand, is you don't need to stockpile, because those services are probably not going to go away. Social distancing and isolation, as we talked about, it's not just as simple as hand washing. It is talking about closing large spaces, places where people are going to gather. You've seen probably the local, and Tarrant County, City of Fort Worth issued their declarations yesterday. Fort Worth is doing a 250-person ban on gatherings, so any event that was 250 people or more has gotten canceled. And that's Main Street Arts Festival, probably Mayfest, all those other things that are going to happen are likely to be canceled. Things don't need to just be erased off the face of the earth. You can reschedule it till when we get through this. This is something we will get through. Nonessential travel, that's a common one, you know, if you don't have to go outside your community, you don't need to. And then if you are in essential service or you are keeping things open, plan for six feet or so of space if possible. So if, you know, we were talking about a gym earlier, you know, every other treadmill is great, that's fine. If you've got cleaning equipment and hand sanitizer and all that other things, that's good. And then from, the important thing is for your high-risk groups to understand that if you don't really need to go out into the community for a while, it's probably for the best. You know, a lot of the data and a lot of the CDC recommendations talk about high-risk groups not congregating in more than 10 people, all right? And so in the sense that if you're, even if you're the only high-risk person, you shouldn't go into a group of more than 10 people, which is like us. So just to be completely aware, that's sort of where we're at.
All right. First of all, thank you for coming and joining us this morning. We really appreciate it. Having your expertise here is invaluable to us. And I know I'll have a few questions, but I'll give others the floor first. Anyone? So in your, from your perspective, should other cities follow the lead of Fort Worth and go ahead and make their declarations?
So the actual issuance of a declaration or of a public health emergency, and granted, I'm not a political sort of person, but my understanding is what it really gives is the ability to move swifter than having to meet for city council meetings. That's sort of the big one. The fact that the president and then the governor have issued states of emergency helps us access things like, there's a thing called the Strategic National Stockpile. There's a Strategic National Stockpile for personal protective equipment. That's going to be a huge help to us as a community. Those will come through our racks, and so it's not necessarily down to the agency level, it's down to the regional level, and we've got good involvement with those organizations to make sure that our local communities are getting the required equipment that they need. So I wouldn't give any advice about states of emergency, but I think that's a decision for you all to make.
And do you think it is, do you think it's time for all of our cities to issue prohibitions against the mass gatherings and things like that?
You know, it depends. So Burleson, you guys, from what I've seen, you know, you are relatively unique compared to Fort Worth, right? So there's plenty of homes that are spaced far apart, there's not the population density that something like Fort Worth has, and so in some respects, you're already better protected than some of the other sort of more urban cities. It really depends on, if you look at your event calendar for the next three, six months, and look at how big they're going to be, and really, it's part population or part anticipated attendance, but it's also part density. You know, if you're going to have 100 people in a small space, I mean, they're not going to be able to be within, or, you know, arms' reach of each other, if they can't separate that far, then it's probably a good idea to shut those down for now. Because if we've seen anything, you know, this is a novel disease, but the concepts have existed for a long time, and we have people with the same disease that are showing us what not to do, right? So you put Italy compared to South Korea, so Italy chose to do very little, South Korea put the entire country on lockdown almost immediately. Now granted, we're not going to be able to implement Asian levels of quarantine, it's just not feasible in the United States. But South Korea has, still has a lot of cases, but they're not seeing the mortality that other countries are. Italy right now is in absolute shambles with their healthcare system, and they're having to make extremely tough decisions that none of us want to have to make. And so they've implemented a full quarantine, but it's hard to do when the virus is out.
So given what you said about, if you have one confirmed case, then that tells you certain things about risk level, is that a time, is that indication that it's time to trigger some, you know, more aggressive...
So it's funny, so, you know, two nights ago, Dallas came out with theirs, when they went from three to eight cases or whatever it was, and people sit and think, like, why would eight cases be a big deal? But eight cases is probably not just eight, and that's the hard part. When you look at the fact that 80% are mild symptoms, some people honestly just have cough cold, and the fact that it's winter, they'll assume that it's their normal cough cold congestion. And then on top of that, you know, there's actually data that suggests, not asymptomatic spread, but what we call presymptomatic spread. So a couple days before you actually start developing symptoms, about a quarter of people are shedding the virus, which again adds to the transmission and why it's hard to keep lit on things. And so people don't access the healthcare community until they're symptomatic. It's impossible to know beforehand that you're infectious, but the only way to prevent that infection is to implement all the measures that we've talked about before. It's extremely hard not to touch your face, I'll say that.
I'm trying to be mindful of that as we sit here, and you're right.
Yeah. It's, my nose is itchy right now, and it's driving me crazy. And, you know, it's hard, but, you know, these are the tried and tested ways to get through it. I think the, from a long-term perspective, you know, me personally, I'd rather go down as the person who came in front of city councils and told them to shut everything down and had been wrong, than to have not made enough of an effort to inform people and have a widespread transmission in a community.
Okay.
So Mayor, I got a question. What about Sunday church gatherings? I guess that would be discouraged.
So whereas most cities have not put a ban on religious gatherings, they have essentially said, yeah, if your church is, you know, set up kind of like this one, and every seat's going to be full, yeah, you probably should look at having video tele, you know, teleconferencing services, same with workplaces and everything else. You know, again, being 2020, you can livestream whatever you want, you know, and so I absolutely agree. If you're in a mass gathering like a church or other houses of worship, I would start to talk about how to transition those to an at-home service, at least for the time being.
And I know some of our churches, a number of our churches have already done that.
Yeah.
And some have and some have not. Catherine?
Well, so I was gonna, that was one of the questions I was going to ask Stuart, too. So the ban in Fort Worth, is it sort of extending to all events, sort of private?
All public and private events, all events and gatherings of 250 people or more. So it's not specifically special events, it is all gatherings.
All gatherings, okay. And inside of that, are they making any exceptions for events that implement different cleaning policies?
Nope.
Okay.
Spent an entire day in the EOC yesterday, and it was very clear. Everything is a recommendation except for the ban on 250 or more. That is, that is a declaration.
So just so I'm clear, would it be your recommendation that we institute a similar ban for the city of Burleson?
I think putting some limitation on mass gatherings is a good idea, yes. So to be frank, and I don't have the graph with me, but there is a graph that shows, based on the number of patients in the community and the expected attendance of the event, what the percent likelihood is that someone in the event will have COVID-19. And the hard part is it's based on what we call homogenous data, so we have to assume that the patients are equally scattered throughout the community. Your risk in Burleson right now is extremely low, but if you look, if you look as the city of Burleson, or if you look as the city of Fort Worth, and you realize that you don't have what's called community transmission, which is the big sort of turning point in a pandemic, that's reassuring. But if you think of us as the DFW community, we have cases of community transmission in the community. And so it would be silly for us to assume that someone doesn't drive from Johnson County to Collin County at least once a day. You know, it's something that happens, and so pretending that we have walls around our city borders is a...
Well, that's the point I was going to make. We can't, we really should be careful not to just base our actions on what's happening within the city limits of Fort Worth, because so many of us work, or what's happening in city Burleson, because so many of us work in the city of Fort Worth, or in, some people work in Dallas County, you know, all over the place. So you're right, we're not all contained within the city limits.
As an example, late last night, the third case in Tarrant County was identified. That patient actually had it transmitted to them through the patient in Collin County, through one of the patients in Collin County, they were what was called a close contact. So whereas it's not, it's technically considered travel-related, they have fun definitions about whether they can find the source or not. They know the source was travel-related, but it is community transmission. Someone in Collin County hung out with someone who lives in Tarrant County, transmitted the disease, that patient drove to Tarrant County, developed symptoms, and then was out there.
Right. I had one other question. So as I understand, and maybe we can speak to, if someone has symptoms that they are concerned about, what are the actions that they should take?
So the first thing for a patient to decide is, how sick do they feel? Okay? And that's the decision everyone makes about how sick they are every day. So if they are having trouble breathing, if they are having trouble walking, if they feel like it's a life-threatening emergency, then they should go to the emergency department, whether that's by ambulance or private vehicle, that's their decision. If they feel well enough that they don't need to go to an emergency department, and I do want to preface this with, some people who decided to go to the emergency department should rethink whether they really need to go to the emergency department or not, okay? If they feel well enough to stay home, they should contact their primary care doctor. If they don't have a primary care doctor, they should contact their county health department. So I know you guys span a couple counties, so they should call Tarrant or Johnson County Health Department, depending on who it is. The lab that will run the test is in Tarrant County. The hard part is, and this is a national problem, not a local problem, but there are not really as many tests as we would like, and so the limitation on testing is, it's hard to get a test. And so if your primary care doctor wants to order you a test, it's somewhat difficult for you actually to get that. But the important point is this, if you think you have the flu, or COVID-19, or any other sort of transmissible disease, staying home and isolating yourself for 14 days is the answer. Because if you go and get tested and you're positive, you're going to go home and isolate for 14 days. If you go home, or if you go and get tested and it's negative, you should probably still isolate yourself for 14 days. And so we talk a lot about testing, and it's great to know if you have the disease or not from an epidemiologic standpoint and a risk standpoint, but the flu does also transmit very easily, and so you should not be going out in public if you do have all of these same signs and symptoms, whether it's due to COVID-19 or something else.
So the key point there, unless you're, if you don't feel sick enough that you need to go get immediate medical care, the key is, and you're concerned about your symptoms, you think you might have COVID-19, call your physician. Your physician is the one that will decide whether or not you need to be tested.
That's correct.
Will give you advice about whether you need to self-quarantine and those sorts of things.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And the last question I have is, I just assume that all of our physicians have the protocols that include all the screening questions to ask and all of that.
So the Texas Medical Association has come out with a great resource document for especially primary care physicians. The Tarrant County Medical Society has shared it with their physicians. I'm not sure, I honestly never really thought about whether the Johnson County Medical Society exists or not, but I would presume if they are members of the Tarrant County Medical Society, or, it's all through TechMed, and so we could share it with them if they don't have it already.
Thank you.
Straight in the trash, on your nose, straight in the trash.
Throw it on the floor.
Just throw it on the floor, yeah. Just straight, that's, it's a great, I was actually really excited that you had a box of Kleenex like right next to you, and then, but it's got to go straight in the trash.
Right, all right. I'm proud to be an example. Are there...
It's okay, I was on Facebook Live yesterday rubbing my face, it was all right.
Everybody else do something you shouldn't do, please.
Yeah.
All right, are there any other questions, comments?
I do have one thing, you mentioned this, and it came right to mind because I was there yesterday, and that's the brick. Downstairs in the gym, the top was, we had eight or 10 people, not so bad, but the bottom was full of kids playing basketball, and they're in close proximity, so I assume that we should do something about that.
So children are interested, so I will touch on your question, I want, before I forget, children are interesting. Children generally don't get extremely sick from COVID-19, and there's something to say that maybe they're not having the same mortality as everybody else, probably due to the fact that they deal with the other coronaviruses a lot more frequently. But kids are the ultimate Petri dish, right? Like, they rub their face, their snot, and then they wipe it on everything, and then everybody picks it up.
There's no social distancing.
There's no social distancing. And so when you look at why, so, you know, Tarrant County Public Health had a call with all the local ISDs yesterday, and they've recommended, firmly recommended that everyone extend their spring break for two weeks, partly because everyone coming back from spring break needs two weeks to go through their quarantine period. I would recommend, especially if you are in close contact in a venue like that, that we do some steps to limit that. One of the things that's been kicked around, it's a mandatory thing in New York now, is they've taken their city fire code limits and they've cut it by a quarter, okay? That was a very aggressive maneuver, and they've formally done that. So if your building has a limit of 100 people, they've said your new limit is 25, and that's all that's allowed in. So that's, again, another social distancing measure. We talk about places like the grocery store, figuring out a way to limit the amount of people that are in it so that people are away from an arm's length from each other. Those are the sorts of things that we talk about. So if you've got a bunch of kids downstairs coughing on each other, playing basketball, yeah, it's probably not a great idea.
I will note, City announced yesterday that we've canceled the spring break camp that was going to be held at the brick for these very reasons, and because we wanted to act consistently with what the school district, their actions have already been. And I know Brian and Robert will probably have more to say about recommendations for the brick.
I would just think that even if we shut that area down for at least two weeks, didn't de-complete cleaning like the schools do, we'd be in better shape than we are right now. As I said yesterday was just a great example, I mean, it was full.
Yeah. Well, and with school out, it would be packed every day.
Yeah, and the schools being out is a really interesting point. The point of closing the schools is not to encourage playdates and camps and other sort of things. And, and, and I mean that, it was on the call yesterday, they said it's great if you close school, but if Six Flags stays open, they're all going to be over there. And that is not, that is not the intended purpose of closing the schools. And that is, that is part of the reason that the other instruction from public health was figure out how to do home or remote learning, because these kids should be indoors learning and focused on school and not around playing with their friends, spreading disease. And again, you know, I, I understand the ridiculousness of me standing up here and saying shut down kids' basketball games when there's zero cases in the community. I know it sounds ridiculous, but it is likely that there are people out there in the community already. Just because you don't have a positive first case, you don't want to be behind, all right? And that is the point.
Yeah. And I think the other thing we need to do is, as community leaders, we need to be very, very supportive of other institutions and the decisions they make. I, I am, you know, I'm really proud of the school district. I know even before they made the call that they did on Friday, they, you know, they have considered, you know, other actions in the days before and have really wrestled with what the right thing to do is and, and have, you know, and have been in close contact with the city and county health officials. And so, you know, I, I, you know, really applaud what they've done. And then, you know, the folks that are having to make these tough calls for churches and other events and activities, you know, they're going to, they're going to get, get it handed to them a little bit, you know, no matter what they do. And everybody knows their own organizations and so, you know, I, I really just want to be supportive of, of all of our community and faith community partners and, and businesses too, for that matter. And, and want everyone to know that the city is a resource. If you've got questions about what you need to be doing, all those calls can't go into Tarrant County Public Health or the Johnson County Public Health folks. So I know we'll, I know we just want to let everybody know the city is a great resource for that and, and can help, help you walk through those decisions that you need to make. And if you are an organization that decides to continue to offer a service or a program or whatever it is, we're happy to walk you through how to do that in the healthiest manner possible as well.
If you look, Tarrant County, when they issued their declaration yesterday, had a great list of items on the back. And, and they don't necessarily need to be implemented as a declaration, they're all just best practices already. So they talk about if you are in a central workplace, doing staggered shifts or working from home or other ways where you can limit the distance between people. And so there's, there's steps that you should be taking, you know, whether it's, it's emergency or not. The fact of the matter is, the country is now in a public health emergency. Just because a, a single locality doesn't have a lot of cases, doesn't mean that the country shouldn't take it seriously, so.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions and I, I don't really expect firm answers, but maybe you can give me ballpark answers. Considering that we take the recommended measures and that people generally follow the guidelines that are put out by the state and by the city if we choose to act on this, my concern is the mood of the public and the panic that is set in. And, and, I know everything I need to know about the disease because I check Facebook every day. I know it's absolutely just a cold and I know it will absolutely kill you. I know all facets. What I would like more to know is, as a, as a medical person, what event or sequence of events or scenario do you predict would signal the all-clear or something to relax some of these things? One of the things I'm, I'm concerned about is canceling events or postponing events. If you're going to cancel an event, okay, you cancel it. If you're going to postpone an event, in this present scenario, with our attempt to slow the curve down, flatten it out, subsequently probably prolonging the period, what kind of timeframe are we looking at and what kind of events will show that we're...
So, it's great, it is a great question. So, so the, like you said, I, all I can give you is a ballpark because at the end of the day, it is novel and, and we're working out best guesses. You've probably heard of a doctor named Jeremy Faust, he's working with the president and he's the, something or other for the Infectious Disease Society of America. He has essentially said the, the, if you implement a bunch of measures, social distancing and isolation measures, I think the shortest run of the disease that we can look at is something like three weeks. If you do end up with a significant number of cases and even if you are flattening the curve, we could be talking about a few months. And so, you know, I think generally what most people have been looking at is three to six months being a, a, let's hunker down for a while and, and see how it goes. In terms of, of actually looking at data to suggest things are tailing off, there's two sort of numbers that we look at. One is new cases per day and one is active cases per day. And so when we talk about the curve, we're actually talking about active cases per day. But, but in reality, new cases per day is also there. So if you look at China, they went from a day where they were diagnosing 3,000 new patients per day, and then after implementing all of their extreme quarantine measures, they brought that down to zero cases per day. And so they are very much on the tail end of this and this entire thing for them has lasted since early December. And granted, you have to ignore December because they let it run rampant for a month, and then has lasted until March. So we're talking two, three months. The, the hard part is when we talk about social isolation and quarantine measures, the stronger they are, the quicker it gets resolved. And in the United States, we cannot or will not implement the measures that some of our Asian colleagues can do, and so we can anticipate a slightly longer course of resolution. So if you were to say to lock everyone in their homes for two months, you could probably get rid of it. And I mean everyone in the entire country. And that's, that's just not possible.
They'd have to stay out of the toilet paper aisle at age...
Yeah, they, at least there would be toilet paper, yes. I, I really, you know, I wish I had an explanation for the toilet paper thing. My understanding is, you know, the shops will stock back up.
Okay, well, I mean, we have some significant once-in-a-lifetime events coming up in May. We have a couple of really eagerly anticipated events coming up towards the end of this month.
Right.
The Be Healthy Fun Run, I know that's kind of been put on a, on the ballot today or whether we're going to go forward with it, whether we'll postpone it or whether we'll just forget about it, which would be the second year we, we canceled the event if we cancel it this year.
There's, there's one other great graph that I, I didn't bring up, but it, but it was about the actual 1918 flu, which is if we're going to compare this COVID-19 to anything, it's probably Spanish flu in 1918. There's a, there's a Tale of Two Cities graph that looks at Philadelphia and St. Louis, if you've seen it. And as everyone was coming back from World War I, they wanted to celebrate with parades and everything else, but the, but the risk of the Spanish flu was, was coming through. St. Louis chose to heed the warning of public health and shut down their parade, perform social isolation and, and measures like that, whereas Philadelphia told everyone to F off and just did all, whatever they wanted. The graph is quite severe. Philadelphia had a significantly higher mortality rate of the Spanish flu compared to St. Louis. And, and it is a extremely hard decision to make, especially as elected officials, to close things that people are looking forward to. But in my opinion, it is harder to look people in the face as they lose family members from something that was potentially preventable. And so again, you know, I personally am in a position where I'm coming up here and saying these things and I could absolutely be wrong and that, that is something I will live with later, but I would be much more remiss if I did not give the realities of this.
Well, and the, really good fair point, some point for us to think about is it's hard, it would be hard for us to ask other organizations to cancel events or activities that mean a lot to them if we can't do the same thing, you know, on behalf of the city. That's a really good question, Dan. I did have one more question. If we implement the kinds of things that you're talking about, is, you know, is that how we lower that 50% rate that we talked about it early in...
Oh, the number of new cases?
Yeah.
It's, so honestly, it's hard to say because yes, that's the, the purpose, but when we talk about flattening curve, if you, if you remember your fun days at calculus...
So it may just be spreading it out?
It may just be the same number of people but spread out, yeah.
Which is important too.
Which is also, is, you know, I, I will tell you, if you have a chance to read through that Mass Critical Care Document, it is not a fun thing to think about in terms of evaluating people objectively, side by side, and deciding who, who benefits from care and who doesn't. And that's exactly what's happening, happening in Italy right now. They do not have the ventilators or the bed space to take care of all the patients that they have and they're making extremely tough decisions very early in the course of people's disease about whether or not they should have the resources spent on them or not. And, and in the United States, that's something unheard of, but is absolutely something that we have to prepare for and hope that we never get to.
I will say this, my perspective, I'm 74 years old, my perspective is going to be much different than younger people, in my opinion.
Pointed at me.
Sure, but that said, it's, it's for the safety of all and not just the older folks like myself. I agree, we should take the measure, even if we see that it did or did not, we've taken the measure and we've done what we were supposed to do and I think it's the way to go.
Well, and, and all of us have that perspective, Ronnie, no matter what age we are, because we're, you know, we all, almost everybody has somebody in their life that falls in, in one of the vulnerable population categories. And so you don't, it's not that we, you should just worry about getting the virus for yourself, but what that means for all the people in your life that you're close to. That, you know, there's the, sure, you can isolate yourself once you know you're sick. The problem is what you do before you even realize it while you may be able to transmit the virus. So I think that's one of the strong considerations we have to make.
And I guess that's the point you're making.
I agree. I agree with Ronnie. I think he makes a very strong point, especially in places like the brick. And as we extend the isolation, that is just going to get more populated, more used. I have a question about any underlining issues with, within the virus. Is there anybody else additionally at risk? I don't want to minimize that, but I, I've seen and I've heard, but I like to hear, is there anybody additionally at risk that have underlining issues that they didn't previously know or...
I've been spending a lot of time reading about this. Everything that I've seen so far points to the big diseases that really put you at risk of, of death from all the other infectious diseases. So cardiovascular disease, respiratory disease, so especially things like COPD, you're chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, even diabetes is an especially big risk factor, both type 1 and type 2 diabetes. And then your cardiovascular diseases, those with chronic heart disease, heart failure, coronary artery disease in terms of heart attacks, strokes, that sort of thing.